Good morning. Today is Thursday, January 20th, 2022. Commissioners' Court are meeting in regular special, correction, a special open session.
Good morning, everybody. The judge will be here joining us a little later today. I will get the meeting going this morning and we'll start off with our pledge allegiance. If you can please rise.
Pledge of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Rashida and Audrey Lopez. Item number three is public comment. We do have a guest speaker today for public comment, Ms. Irene Valenzuela, Executive Director of Community Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Irene Valenzuela with Community Services Department. It's good to see you all in person, first time in a while.
Good morning.
It's my great pleasure to come this morning to introduce to you one of our newest hires in our department, Community Services. Over the last couple of years, during your strategic planning process, you all have prioritized expanding library services and literacy to county residents. And so, we've worked with you, with your vision, to do that. An idea was born out of a certain success in San Antonio with our Bibliotech Concept. You all embraced that idea of having a digital services component. It's very creative, very innovative, cost-effective. With the help of HR, we developed a job description and a process, and we began recruitment in 2020, right before the pandemic. Except when that happened, we had to scale that back, that budget was cut a little bit for us, so we halted that recruitment process, but we began again when you all restored that budget the following year. We recruited, a lot of great candidates came out of it. In that candidate, we're happy to welcome, Priscilla Moreno is our newest and the first ever county's digital services librarian. Very happy to welcome her. December 28th is when she started, so I'm here to present to her. I'll give her, the court, a little bit of information about her credentials, and then I'll have her say a few words for you all. Priscilla comes to us by way of EPISD, where she served as the head librarian at Andrews High School from 2017 to 2021. Prior to that, she was head librarian at Jefferson High School since 2011. I'm sorry the judge isn't here, I'm sure he would have been proud of that, happy to hear that. Priscilla has an undergraduate degree from UTEP in English and Secondary Education, and she received her master's degree in Library Science from Texas Women's University. Her other credentials include, from the Texas State Board of Educator Certification, include certificates in ESL, Texas Educator, eight to twelve English Language Arts and Reading, K through twelve Technology Applications, and K through twelve School Library. Priscilla also was a head librarian at Jefferson before that, and we're happy to have her on board. She's very qualified, has great credentials, she's already hit the ground running, done a ton of research. We're going to meet with the San Antonio Digital Library tomorrow and discuss moving forward, what the process is to launch. So, without further ado, I'd like to present to Priscilla Moreno.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. I am very excited to work as part of her team, and I look forward to serving my community here in El Paso, Texas, through this new all-digital library. Thank you.
Well, welcome to, to our county family. I've got to tell you that, I know that all, all of us here really are anxious to get this program off the ground, and I'll always remember something a librarian told me back when I was in the third, fourth grade, that the difference between somebody who can read and somebody who cannot, if you read, take advantage, read the newspaper books, to somebody who does not, there's really no difference between somebody who can and can't. So, welcome aboard, and I know, I, I remember my first day here, and, and I've grown to love our county family, and we're sure that you will too. So, welcome on board.
Thank you for the warm, warm welcome. Thank you.
You, Commissioners.
Thank you, Irene.
Our first branch is in Aguadulce, so her office is in Aguadulce, so she's getting to learn that community, and obviously with the goal of expanding into our other county rural communities as well. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Now, in, in order to give the, the judge, he's involved in a, in a court hearing this morning, but in order to give him some time to get back on some of these items that are, I really think, and he really needs to be involved in them, if you don't mind, we can, I think we're going to delete item five, is that correct, Jessica?
Yes, item number five, receive a presentation from the Public Defender's Office regarding operations and staff organization. We can have a motion to delete.
The move.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego is absent, motion carries.
So, in keeping and waiting for him to get back, if you don't mind, Commissioners, if we can start with item number six.
Item number six, discuss a food system resiliency and sustainability project and receive direction on a proposal to be implemented at the county-owned Civilian Conservation Corp site at the entrance to the San Elisario Historic District.
Good morning, Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today virtually. Really appreciate the continued flexibility in these times. I do have a presentation with you, for you this morning, on a project that has been growing by leaps and bounds in partnership with the city of San Elisario's Urban Agriculture Department. If, if I could present to you information about the project and some of our goals. And then with me this morning is also Ms. Maya Sanchez, City Administrator for the city of San Elisario, who will be with me to answer any questions and offer additional remarks about the project and, and our goals going, going forward, that we hope to gain your support for. All right, so if we can go ahead and move to the next slide, please, thank you. So, as we have seen, and as we already know, there are many different strengths and weaknesses in our regional and local food system. We've partnered and developed different strategies to address this, based on our knowledge of the pub, of the lack of public access to healthy and affordable foods, compounded with the low SNAP and WIC enrollment. We have strengths as far as our abundance of growers and talent in entrepreneurship. Our Mission Valley and a lot of our rural areas throughout the county have plenty of open space that historically and traditionally has been used for urban agriculture in and of itself. And we also, as a community, serve as leaders in food production under extreme climate conditions for, for centuries now. One weakness, major weakness that we have though, is that our small businesses struggle with lack of infrastructure, there's lack of access to the equipment that's needed for federal standards for sanitation and, and distribution. We do have workforce, but there's a huge need for training and support, and then also space for, for produce, for production of value-added goods, which add to the revenue sources needed to sustain these types of programs. And then we also know very well that these different issues have been exacerbated recently as a result of the pandemic, which has totally increased our, our public health crisis in access to public, to healthy and affordable foods. Next slide, please. The county has been engaged, as I mentioned, in food system work for the past several years. We engage in small business support. We've, we've hosted a series of food action roundtables to obtain information from the public about needs from both a public health standpoint and nutrition, to also the food distribution and production issues. We have established workforce development and educational programs with the Texas A&M AgriLife Extensions Prairie View Campus. In 2018, we also adopted our Healthy Food Financing Initiative, in which we've engaged in two rounds of funding so far, a third to begin, to begin this coming spring, in the funding of everything from food hubs and distribution sites, mobile farmers markets and market stands, retail establishments. We, as, as a result of the pandemic, we use some of our CARES Act funding to provide agricultural technology and food system relief sprints with the New Mexico State University Arrowhead Center. And then, of course, we've also provided amounts of emergency food relief in our support of the different food banks, and our participation in the city's task force for hunger relief. I'd like to point out very quickly, both of our, all of our long-term strategies are derived from our Mission Trail Comprehensive Master Plan. We, I just want to reiterate that all of our different strategies are research-based and come from different recommendations of community input and the partners that we, we work with, as a means of enhancing the work that's already being done. Next slide, please. Here are examples of a meal that was catered by a local restaurant, Tacos Guadalajara on Socorro Road in, in San Elisario. You see eggplant barbacoa tacos with locally grown cilantro and edible flowers. And to the top right is a, an image of the USDA-funded High Tunnel that was installed at Growing with Sarah Farms, which supplies Bodega Loyah, one of our HFFI recipients, in their efforts to supply local food banks, as well as provide healthy and affordable food to the public by way of their farmer's market stands. And then below, an image of the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank, and, and the lines that we have seen showing the true intense need that our community is experiencing right now, as a result of, of the ongoing issues from, from the pandemic. Next slide, please. So, diving a little bit deeper into our partnership with the city of San Elisario Urban Agriculture Department, and the many different projects and initiatives. And then, with me this morning is also Ms. Maya Sanchez, City Administrator for the city of San Elisario, who will be with me to answer any questions and offer additional remarks about the project and, and our goals going, going forward, that we hope to gain your support for. All right, so if we can go ahead and move to the next slide, please, thank you. So, as we have seen, and as we already know, there are many different strengths and weaknesses in our regional and local food system. We've partnered and developed different strategies to address this, based on our knowledge of the pub, of the lack of public access to healthy and affordable foods, compounded with the low SNAP and WIC enrollment. We have strengths as far as our abundance of growers and talent in entrepreneurship. Our Mission Valley and a lot of our rural areas throughout the county have plenty of open space that historically and traditionally has been used for urban agriculture in and of itself. And we also, as a community, serve as leaders in food production under extreme climate conditions for, for centuries now. One weakness, major weakness that we have though, is that our small businesses struggle with lack of infrastructure, there's lack of access to the equipment that's needed for federal standards for sanitation and, and distribution. We do have workforce, but there's a huge need for training and support, and then also space for, for produce, for production of value-added goods, which add to the revenue sources needed to sustain these types of programs. And then we also know very well that these different issues have been exacerbated recently as a result of the pandemic, which has totally increased our, our public health crisis in access to public, to healthy and affordable foods. Next slide, please. The county has been engaged, as I mentioned, in food system work for the past several years. We engage in small business support. We've, we've hosted a series of food action roundtables to obtain information from the public about needs from both a public health standpoint and nutrition, to also the food distribution and production issues. We have established workforce development and educational programs with the Texas A&M AgriLife Extensions Prairie View Campus. In 2018, we also adopted our Healthy Food Financing Initiative, in which we've engaged in two rounds of funding so far, a third to begin, to begin this coming spring, in the funding of everything from food hubs and distribution sites, mobile farmers markets and market stands, retail establishments. We, as, as a result of the pandemic, we use some of our CARES Act funding to provide agricultural technology and food system relief sprints with the New Mexico State University Arrowhead Center. And then, of course, we've also provided amounts of emergency food relief in our support of the different food banks, and our participation in the city's task force for hunger relief. I'd like to point out very quickly, both of our, all of our long-term strategies are derived from our Mission Trail Comprehensive Master Plan. We, I just want to reiterate that all of our different strategies are research-based and come from different recommendations of community input and the partners that we, we work with, as a means of enhancing the work that's already being done. Next slide, please. Here are examples of a meal that was catered by a local restaurant, Tacos Guadalajara on Socorro Road in, in San Elisario. You see eggplant barbacoa tacos with locally grown cilantro and edible flowers. And to the top right is a, an image of the USDA-funded High Tunnel that was installed at Growing with Sarah Farms, which supplies Bodega Loyah, one of our HFFI recipients, in their efforts to supply local food banks, as well as provide healthy and affordable food to the public by way of their farmer's market stands. And then below, an image of the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank, and, and the lines that we have seen showing the true intense need that our community is experiencing right now, as a result of, of the ongoing issues from, from the pandemic. Next slide, please. So, diving a little bit deeper into our partnership with the city of San Elisario Urban Agriculture Department, and the many different projects and initiatives.
When that happened, we had to scale that back. That budget was cut a little bit for us, so we halted that recruitment process. But we began again when you all restored that budget the following year. We recruited, a lot of great candidates came out of it. In that candidate, we're happy to welcome. Priscilla Moreno is our newest and the first ever county's digital services librarian. Very happy to welcome her. December 28th is when she started. So I'm here to present to her. I'll give her the court a little bit of information about her credentials, and then I'll have her say a few words for you all. Priscilla comes to us by way of EPISD, where she served as the head librarian at Andres High School from 2017 to 2021. Prior to that, she was head librarian at Jefferson High School since 2011. I'm sorry the judge isn't here. I'm sure he would have been proud of that and happy to hear that. Priscilla has an undergraduate degree from UTEP in English and Secondary Education, and she received her master's degree in Library Science from Texas Women's University. Her other credentials include, from the Texas State Board of Educator Certification, include certificates in ESL, Texas Educator, Educator, A to 12 English Language Arts and Reading, K through 12 Technology Applications, and K through 12 School Library. Priscilla also was a head librarian at Jefferson before that, and we're happy to have her on board. She's very qualified, has great credentials. She's already hit the ground running, done a ton of research. We're going to meet with the San Antonio Digital Library tomorrow and discuss moving forward, what the process is to launch. So without further ado, I'd like to present Priscilla Moreno.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. I am very excited to work as part of her team, and I look forward to serving my community here in El Paso, Texas, through this new all-digital library. Thank you.
Well, welcome to our county family. I've got to tell you that I know that all of us here really are anxious to get this program off the ground. And I'll always remember something a librarian told me back when I was in the third, fourth grade, that the difference between somebody who can read and somebody who cannot, if you read, take advantage, read the newspaper books. To somebody who does not, there's really no difference between somebody who can and can't. So welcome aboard, and I know, I remember my first day here, and I've grown to love our county family, and we're sure that you will too. So welcome on board.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Thank you.
You, Commissioner.
Thank you, Amy.
Our first branch is in Aguadulce, so her office is in Aguadulce. So she's getting to learn that community, and obviously with the goal of expanding into our other county rural communities as well. Thank you all. Have a good day.
In order to give the judge, he's involved in a court hearing this morning, but in order to give him some time to get back on some of these items that are, I really think, and he really needs to be involved in them, if you don't mind, we can, I think we're going to delete item five. Is that correct, Jessica?
Yes, item number five. Receive a presentation from the Public Defender's Office regarding operations and staff organization. We can have a motion to delete. Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Tammanyego is absent. Motion carries.
So in keeping and waiting for him to get back, if you don't mind, Commissioners, we can start with item number six.
Item number six. Discuss a food system resiliency and sustainability project and receive direction on a proposal to be implemented at the county-owned Civilian Conservation Corp site at the entrance to the San Elisario Historic District.
Good morning, Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today virtually. Really appreciate the continued flexibility in these times. I do have a presentation with you, for you this morning on a project that has been growing by leaps and bounds in partnership with the city of San Elisario's Urban Agriculture Department. If I could present to you information about the project and some of our goals. And then with me this morning is also Ms. Maya Sanchez, City Administrator for the city of San Elisario, who will be with me to answer any questions and offer additional remarks about the project and our goals going forward that we hope to gain your support for. All right, so if we can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as we have seen and as we already know, there are many different strengths and weaknesses in our regional and local food system. We've partnered and developed different strategies to address this based on our knowledge of the lack of public access to healthy and affordable foods, compounded with the low SNAP and WIC enrollment. We have strengths as far as our abundance of growers and talent in entrepreneurship. Our Mission Valley and a lot of our rural areas throughout the county have plenty of open space that historically and traditionally has been used for urban agriculture in and of itself. And we also, as a community, serve as leaders in food production under extreme climate conditions for centuries now. One weakness, major weakness that we have though is that our small businesses struggle with lack of infrastructure. There's lack of access to the equipment that's needed for federal standards for sanitation and distribution. We do have workforce, but there's a huge need for training and support, and then also space for produce, for production of value-added goods, which add to the revenue sources needed to sustain these types of programs. And then we also know very well that these different issues have been exacerbated recently as a result of the pandemic, which has totally increased our public health crisis in access to public, to healthy and affordable foods. Next slide, please. The county has been engaged, as I mentioned, in food system work for the past several years. We engage in small business support. We've hosted a series of food action roundtables to obtain information from the public about needs from both a public health standpoint and nutrition to also the food distribution and production issues. We have established workforce development and educational programs with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extensions Prairie View Campus. In 2018, we also adopted our Healthy Food Financing Initiative, in which we've engaged in two rounds of funding so far, a third to begin this coming spring in the funding of everything from food hubs and distribution sites, mobile farmers' markets and market stands, retail establishments. We, as a result of the pandemic, we used some of our CARES Act funding to provide agricultural technology and food system relief sprints with the New Mexico State University Arrowhead Center. And then, of course, we've also provided amounts of emergency food relief in our support of the different food banks and our participation in the city's task force for hunger relief. I'd like to point out very quickly, both of our, all of our long-term strategies are derived from our Mission Trail Comprehensive Master Plan. We, I just want to reiterate that all of our different strategies are research-based and come from different recommendations of community input and the partners that we work with as a means of enhancing the work that's already being done. Next slide, please. Here are examples of a meal that was catered by a local restaurant, Tacos Guadalajara on Socorro Road in San Elisario. You see eggplant barbacoa tacos with locally grown cilantro and edible flowers. And to the top right is a, an image of the USDA-funded High Tunnel that was installed at Growing with Sarah Farms, which supplies Bodega Loyah, one of our HFFI recipients, in their efforts to supply local food banks, as well as provide healthy and affordable food to the public by way of their farmers' market stands. And then below, an image of the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank and the lines that we have seen showing the true intense need that our community is experiencing right now as a result of the ongoing issues from the pandemic. Next slide, please. So diving a little bit deeper into our partnership with the city of San Elisario Urban Agriculture Department and the many different projects and initiatives that they have underway in their efforts to reestablish urban agriculture in Mission Valley. They are actively engaged for the past, I believe, more than five years in research-based desert-growing practices to produce drought-tolerant and heat-tolerant edible foods, as well as engage in beautification through desert xeriscaping. They have partnered with Coca-Cola to procure rainwater harvesting equipment to maximize our water resources during monsoon seasons. They actively engage in grower recruitment and workforce development and training, as well as distribution pipelines for the food that is being produced to area grocery stores and retail outlets. They also engage in programs to connect growers to available land throughout Mission Valley for micro-farming. Aside from actual production and growing of food, they also work directly with different public health partners, such as Ayuda Inc., Centro San Vicente, the county's own senior nutrition program at Ayuda and Centro San Vicente. And some photos on the next slide here. You'll see images of the garden plots that they've installed as part of their training with the community as a means of supplying their local food pantries with fresh foods and to have revenue-producing product to sell if they choose as part of their expansion of the availability of healthy and affordable foods. And then recently, there's been a request from the San Elisario Independent School District for educational curriculum and instruction for the students there, also adding to the workforce pipeline for food production. Next slide, please. So here is Lorenzo from the city of San Elisario's Urban Agriculture Department on the bottom left, engaging with area youth in planting the summer's crop of cilantro. And then above, an image of him working with the local families there in San Elisario at Ayuda Inc. The next image over is the Annual P Real Food Festival that the city of San Elisario Urban Act Team hosts each September to showcase all of the work that they've engaged in during the growing season with the community. And then to the right, at Ted Richardson Park, installation of a raised bed as one of the, another example of the different demonstration gardens that have been installed in public right-of-way for the public to access. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we move over to the Civilian Conservation Corp site, which is directly in front of the, at the entrance to the Historic District. This is another example of one of the premier demonstration gardens that the Urban Act Team has installed on county property. And also a beautification project. They engaged in a competition with San Elisario Independent School District students to engage in public art on the rainwater harvesting barrels. Next slide. And additional images of the team engaging in training and educational activities with the community in the demonstration gardens during this past summer. Next slide. So I provide all this information about the Urban Act Team's progress and project thus far. They're very much poised for growth. They've been also impacted by COVID with lack of funding. They lack in infrastructure and space, as is the plight of many of our entrepreneurs, and also in workforce. The Civilian Conservation Corp site that the county owns would, could provide the team with a shared workspace to increase their growing capacity, to increase their ability to engage in training with small businesses and entrepreneurs, as well as provide outdoor and indoor educational opportunities for student groups, which is in very high demand. If the San Elisario Urban Act Team can activate the CCC site as a small business development center and food hub, that would be very empowering for the community to expand their growing capacity. Next slide, please. So the Civilian Conservation Corp, owned by the county, is a site that's located on Socorro Road, just outside of, at the entrance, I should say, to the Historic District. It's an 875-square-foot adobe structure. It was built in the 1930s to serve the community as a public health clinic. At that time, there was not an available clinic in San Elisario for service throughout Mission Valley. It is a contributing structure to the National Register Historic District. Next slide, please. This is another image, an aerial image of the site. You can see there's plenty of room to grow. To the southeast is where the demonstration gardens are currently installed, and directly to the northwest of the property is area for plenty of parking or new construction if it were desired by the community and the will of the court. Next slide, please. We recommend adaptive reuse or mixed reuse redevelopment of the site. We have worked to develop preliminary plans with the Urban Act Team based on their vision for phasing of site redevelopment. We would hope that some of the county's ARPA funds that have been set aside for research and studies might be considered for the development of a strategic implementation plan to assist us with the different phases of the project, starting with Phase One, which would be getting the building up to code and safe for the public to use. This would require new electrical and plumbing, adobe restoration in accordance with federal standards as necessary, parking. And then Phase Two, we thought would be great to establish a Historic District Welcome Center and also a Urban Act Mini Food Processing Hub. Phase Two would include installation of rain gutters to complement and make functioning the harvesting equipment that has already been installed. It would include garden and property enhancements, procurement of sanitizing equipment for processing and distribution of food products from the participating growers. And next slide, please. These are additional images of the interior, what previously was occupied by the Familias Triunfadoras organization. And they outgrew the space. It's an 875 square feet, as I mentioned, but it definitely has a lot of potential. Next slide, please. It has two large rooms, the front of which we proposed would be the Visitor Center. We've talked with the El Paso Community Foundation Historic Preservation staff members about the possibility of installing a mini-museum exhibit to explain the history of urban agriculture and traditional growing in Mission Valley. And then using the other half of the building to establish the processing center and the shared workspace for the growers and for the Urban Act Team to provide their educational activities. Next slide. Additional images of the demonstration gardens that are winterized currently, of course, but as they currently stand. Keyhole Garden at the corner of Socorro Road, and then the raised beds that you see with the rainwater harvesting barrels. Next slide, please. Phase Three would allow for establishment of the Visitor Center, a microgrocery or local artisan co-op component to help the facility become revenue-producing and more self-sustaining. The installation of an outdoor classroom or additional grounds amenities. It's been mentioned that a gate would be helpful for easier load-in and load-out of soil and different equipment for public use. An eventual expansion and activation of the use of the Los Portales Museum Commercial Kitchen and Historic Site grounds for additional shared workspace, value-added goods production, outdoor education and events. We would envision cooking demonstrations and farm-to-table dinners and programs with local chefs using ingredients that have been produced by the community. And then, of course, every step of the way, our strategic implementation plan helping to guide us in research-based initiatives and strategies to make sure that we're functioning and continuing to expand in the most logical way possible. And our final phase, given that a lot of the partners and growers also extend throughout the community of Torneo, and the county also owns property at the Torneo port of entry, and also our larger, more regional goals of eventually expanding to increase our cross-border food trade with our partner growers in the state of Chihuahua, Mexico. Next slide, please. So I've put together preliminarily some possible funding mechanisms that we might consider researching a little bit further. Next slide, please, if it is the will of the court. Using county resources, such as our Hot Revenue and Economic Impact Fund, this could help start off the project with getting the site to a functional form through the grounds and built, structure restoration, establishment of the Visitor Center, and then the Economic Impact Fund for small business support as far as training, the establishment of the microgrocery by way of procurement of the point-of-sale system, and a small refrigeration unit for grocery products produced by the community. I mentioned ARPA funding earlier for implementation and feasibility, or possibly even to consider this as a resiliency project. And then public-private partnerships would assist with functioning for additional museum exhibit procurement, local foods promotion. Well, the USDA has excellent marketing grants that are available to local governments to promote their efforts in regional and local foods production and distribution that we've, that we hope to apply for this summer and will also bring back to the court for consideration. I'll mention all of these estimates that I've put together are based on current projects underway, what I've seen through research that I've done, and also in my experience with the HFFI recipients as to current costs of equipment for use in food production. My experience and what I've researched also as far as the cost for different types of studies and master plans and different types of planning documents. And also what we've seen, you may have noticed in the backup documentation, I provided an example of a proposal that was put together a couple of years ago, just before the pandemic began. It was just over $40,000 for restoration of the site. With the approval of the court, I'd like to research how much that would, or to have a re-quote. Currently, we are partnering with the Public Works Department to address the flooding issues in the Historic District. So there would be cost savings by taking that portion of the proposal that was attached as part of the backup, being that that's going to be addressed in a different project, the flood mitigation project. Next slide, please. Outcomes and anticipated achievements. Next slide, please. So all of these suggestions and projects that are underway are really our manner of addressing long-term and sustainable solutions to the different gaps and obstacles that we have in our regional food system. With advanced production and distribution in Mission Valley and throughout the region, so improves our potential for expanded cross-border food trade and also puts the county in a really strong position for continuing to lead our region and the nation who's beginning to experience desertification and climate issues that we have already been continuing to grow in spite of for over the last, since our existence. So we would also have the ability to improve our community's well-being. Gardening is very therapeutic with the empowerment of the community to grow their own food. There is a lot of ability to improve quality of life and improve everyone's overall ability to make healthier choices. Next slide, please. This project would allow us to increase our business retention and expansion, our partnerships in using the CCC site as a shared workspace by way of the city of San Elisario's activation of the site, and of course, also capitalizing on our ability to tap into our cultural heritage tourism by way of the Historic District Welcome Center and Mini Museum, the co-op or microgrocery component. Really, the CCC site has the ability to become a revenue-producing attraction as well as help us address our issues with our food system. Next slide, please. At this time, I would like to invite Maya to provide any comments or add on to anything that I've stated. Thank you so much for listening to me around, Juan. Please share any questions as well. I tend to get a little excited, but Maya, please share with us.
Valerie, thank you. And Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to give just a brief introduction or summary of what Valerie described in her presentation as it applies to the partnership with the San Elisario Urban Ag project. So as Valerie mentioned, we informally started this project in 2017, but it wasn't funded by the city until fiscal year 2019. Now, one thing to keep in mind, that for this fiscal year, we have only allocated $22,000 to this project, and we have made that stretch. Now, we also apply for grant funding as we can. You know, our staff is very limited, but that's part of the partnership that we've been enjoying with Valerie and the Economic Development Department at the county, simply because there is some technical support that the department has been able to offer us in that regard. However, we also turn that as well. So there is a recipient under the HFFI grant, formerly known as Boca Loco, but we provided technical assistance to him in putting together his grant, his application for the grant. So it's, you know, and Valerie only highlighted just a small segment of the programming that we have implemented, but there's quite a bit more that is, hasn't been presented that we continue to do. So again, as, just to reiterate, having a space to be able to help us with processing for our farmers, actually help with the retail portion, and implementing SNAP and EBT benefits as part of allowing our community to have easier access to healthier food is really what the priority is as far as public health is concerned. But of course, there's also the economic development that we have been enjoying as well. So with that, I just, I want to open it up, see if there's any questions for either Valerie or myself, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Olguin?
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. I just want to thank Valerie for bringing this proposal forward. I spend a lot of time in San Elisario, and it really is a shame that the county owns an asset there, a building there, that unfortunately is an eyesore as you're coming into the beautiful historic area there in San Elisario. And there's a building there that could really be used for so many great purposes, like this partnership with the San Elisario Urban Ag Department. But we're not taking advantage of that. So I'm really thankful for Valerie for bringing this presentation forward today, and thank you, Maya, for your words and for your further explanation of the Urban Ag Department and what they do. I think it's a very, very important project. And again, I would just like to reiterate it. This is an important county asset that we own in this community that could really be put to so many wonderful uses that we're not taking advantage of right now.
Ms. Scherz?
Thank you, Valerie, and thank you, Maya. This is an exciting project. I'm looking forward to being able to support it. You know, it falls directly in line with a number of the projects that we've been working on in the past, projects that have been priorities of mine, like historic preservation, attracting heritage tourism, you know, providing more healthy food to our community, trying to foment our agriculture industry. You know, it's just got lots of great positive impacts, I feel, that would come about if we were to do this. And so I'm 100% behind this project. And the only thing I have to say, though, it's not in my district. I'm just kidding. not in my district, I'm just kidding. So maybe we can work on, you know, future, you know, as we work through this and look at other opportunities. I think all throughout the county, there are spaces that we could do something similar with county property or even with community property, but maybe the Alameda site is one of those where something like this could also be part of what we're looking at doing. But kudos to both of you for coming up with this proposal, and let's get her done. I'm ready.
Commissioner, if I may add, I've had some of your, well, one of your constituents and actually one of your staffers reach out to me with some of the work we're doing to see how it can be duplicated in your district, and I am more than happy to provide that information, and I have done so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you.
I also think, number one, it's a great presentation, and I'd be, I think anybody would be hard-pressed to see any different ways we can go about it, but I've got a question for Valerie. When you mentioned Arrowhead Center, where is that located? I know you mentioned New Mexico.
It's part of the New Mexico State University, sir.
And they're involved in giving us advice in this project?
They provided agricultural technology sprints and COVID pandemic-related relief sprints. They're basically a series of workshops. It's very intensive with small business development-type agencies and experts in the field that offer technical assistance as part of the program for, as part of our strategy in assisting small businesses with pandemic-related relief. And several of the small businesses here in El Paso took advantage of the program and really took the advice that was given and ran with it.
And with this site where this building is located, would that be a good site for, like, the start of a farmer's market, or is it nearby?
Absolutely. Because of all of the, Miguel or Alexis, if you wouldn't mind displaying the image of the aerial view, there's a lot of potential for either new construction or additional outdoor amenities, like the outdoor classroom, wind protection. The blue area outlines the space that belongs to the county. Of course, the parking, really, the sky is the limit. This is, this presentation, I'm very excited to hear support for because this would enable us to start really putting these different plans into visioning with the community as to what they would like to see. At one time, we approached the school district to see if they would consider selling the basketball court area, which they unfortunately declined, but because they've requested assistance with curriculum and instruction in food production and distribution, perhaps they might consider adding on additional amenities to support the program.
No, it's great. I see it as possibly a two- to three-year project, and you know what I like to see is, in the first phase, and I do, I agree with whoever brought up the fact that it is a nice, or once in a while, I bicycle through there and I see that. If we can have, Betsy, you're involved in this, that we have, phase one will cost X amount of dollars, phase two this much, and the money's coming from this account, that account, but this is great. I mean, I'm excited.
Thank you on that note, Commissioner. The item today, we want just to make sure that there is direction and consensus to proceed. We do still have to coordinate internally on exactly the funding sources, whether they're available, and what's the best mechanisms for that funding. We'll be glad to bring that back for specific action items, but we today wanted to make sure we have the court's support and any other feedback about the project. So today's really just feedback, no official action under the item, but just to give us direction, and that's exactly what we'll do.
I think the court feels very excited about it, and the project is in good hands, and we'll wait for more information, and we'll just leave it at as no action for today.
Perfect. This is great feedback. We really appreciate it, and we're excited to bring this project forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Maya. Valerie, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if Michael had any comments. I saw him pop up on the screen.
No, I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration. As Betsy mentioned, we'll explore with budget and also other internal departments what this would look like, but we thank you for the ability to continue finding out what those expected costs could look like and see where those funding resources can tackle those things, and then share back that information with the court when we gain that information.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Item number seven. Receive an update on a proposed redistricting postcard or mailer to be sent to households who are now represented by a different county commissioner based on the new precinct boundaries adopted on November 8, 2021.
Commissioners, good morning. Ramon Bracamontes from County Administration. Back in November, you all approved the new redistricting maps, and then in December, you all asked us to, before early voting starts, which is February 14th, to send a notice to the households to let them know they may have new representation. What, so I got a quick PowerPoint that I'll go through real quick. As you can see on slide one, every one of the four precincts was affected, so there are changes in all of your precincts. The next slide, please. Forty-six total precincts were moved from one commissioner precinct to another one. We've double-checked the list. We have not triple-checked it. We will triple-check it before we send it out, and that third check will consist of me meeting with your staffers to make sure I didn't miss anything. I have a full list of every commissioner precinct now. Next slide, please. And we are proposing one of two things that we should mail out. One is a postcard, and it's approximately 75,000 households, because we're not sending them to every registered voter, and we're not sending them to a neighborhood that was not redistricted. Like, the people in Fabens will never get this postcard because they remained in precinct number three. But my neighborhood that I moved from precinct one to precinct three, my neighborhood will get it, and that's, those are the only ones we're sending the postcards to, and we're sending it to households, not to individuals. If there's three voters in one home, we're proposing not to send it to the three voters, we just send it to the household. You all should have samples of the mailer in front of you and the postcard mailer, and it'll be specific. And on the very first one, it'll say, "Our records indicate that your commissioner of court precinct changed on January 1. As a result, County Commissioner Iliana Holguin now represents your neighborhood." And that one would be sent, like, specific to precinct 124, 125, 130, so that they know. Then the cost for that is $25,414. Purchasing did, they did not bid it out, but they went out and solicited quotes, and this is the best one they got back for us. The county attorneys have been helping us, thanks, major thanks to Anna Schumacher, have been reviewing the wording, and once you all approve, not approve, I mean, have consensus with the way we're proceeding, we will work on the final wording with the county attorney and with Betsy before we send it out. The other proposal is, if you all want, we can just send a letter. It's a little bit more costly because we have to print the envelopes, and sending a letter is a little bit more costly than a postcard, but you have a sample of that letter too, and that will be specific. The next slide, please. And that one will say, "Our records indicate that Commissioner Leon used to represent you, and you are now represented by Commissioner Holguin." And it's a full letter in the bigger map on the back. And next slide, please. And that's it. It's just an update because you all wanted this out before early voting started, and we wanted to see how, can we ask which they prefer?
Yes, we'd like to hear your feedback on whether you are okay with the postcard version. And of course, I also add to what Ramon said. I know in my household, when we get things that are on a postcard, it often goes on the refrigerator to remind me or like to remind me to go look it up, and that might be something you consider over, why you might consider it over a letter. It's easy for people to put up or to have handy, but if you prefer the letter, we'll definitely go that route. It's just a slightly, slightly higher cost, but not very significant, whatever is the pleasure of the court. So we'd like your feedback on that.
Commissioners?
My only concern, Ramon, is that it's not in Spanish, and I think that that's really, really important, that any communication come out in Spanish. So I know that right now, we're looking at this postcard, but I think that there's a larger-sized postcard that unfortunately will come with additional costs, but I think it's worth it, where we could actually fit the English version and the Spanish version, and then maybe the map on the backside, and then you have the space for the label, because I think it's just incredibly important, especially one of the areas that was affected was the Montanavista area that's now going to be in precinct one. A large majority of those residents are Spanish-speaking, and I think that with something as important as this, the redistricting of our commissioner's court precinct lines, I just feel that it has to be in both languages.
I didn't even think about that. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you for bringing that up, and I think it's, I think it's good to provide, I mean, this information, but I don't know if there's some way, if we're going to do a larger postcard, right, like an 11-by-6 size or something like that, you can, I think up to 11-by-6, you still get the same postage rate for a postcard, the 25 cents instead of having to pay the, whatever the letter rate is, 50 cents or whatever it is, but maybe making it, you know, adding some graphic design to it and saying, like, you know, a little more, like, catch your eye, because we don't want people to just look at it and throw it in the garbage either, right?
Right, like a pretty photo in the back of, like, an election booth, or something that's eye-catching.
Some type, yeah, something that's eye-catching, and then like, maybe, you know, on the title, you know, "Before you vote, look at this," or, you know, "Important information," or, you know, "You're in a different district now," you know, something that's going to be bigger, that kind of, and then you can have this information that describes why below in both English and Spanish, but, I mean, something that's going to make them look at it, right? Because I feel like this may not be, it's a little bland.
Got it.
On that item, we were depending on the seal to catch, the county seal to catch their attention and make it read it, and we were modeling after the voter registration cards, but yes, we can do what you are asking for and what Commissioner Holguin is asking for.
What do y'all think? Is that?
I think those are good ideas, the Spanish especially. Maybe something to the effect of important with some, you know, something to catch their eye. The only thing I had, and I agree, the postcard is better, in the back of the letter, would this have been in color or just?
It would have been in color, yes, sir. The map would have been in color on the back of the letter.
And a lot of people are going to turn to the map and really look, and I guess for the size of this, this is about the best detail we can get, but if we go a little larger, it'll be a little more detailed, but I like it. I like your theory there, Betsy, that it goes on the refrigerator, but if Commissioner's Court wants a letter, we can do that letter. But I like that. I agree with you.
We'll do whatever he'd like.
Yeah.
Commissioner Robinson?
Well, my thoughts is pretty much on the same line as for the court, a little bit larger, but want to make sure that it is concise enough to make sure we got the information, essential information for the voter to be notified. And once again, when you say about something that's eye-catching, something that to appeal to the eye, well, you don't get it in, just throw it in the trash.
Yeah, Ramon, important, importante, aguas, I don't know, something.
I like "Before you vote," or, yeah.
Aviso, or, you know, in Spanish, you say aviso, or atención, or, you know, like something like that. Attention, you know, you're, you have, you're in a different voting, you're in a different commissioner precinct, you know, or something along those lines.
That's real good, the seal really caught my eye, too. So it's great. Do we have time to come back one more time with a final version, or do we not?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Okay, no, if.
Somebody else does, not Ramon, but somebody else does have time.
But our timeline to get it out for early voting, to get the draft to the printer and get it done, what is, what's our deadline to get it to them? They have to have time to finalize, print the 75,000 copies, and get it sorted and mailed.
We would have the meeting of January 31 to be able to come back, so as long as we get it to the printer at the start of February, they can get it out before February 14th.
Court, you all want them to come back one more time?
Early voting starts when?
Early voting starts the 14th.
14th?
14th, yes, sir.
Well, I think we need to just go for it.
Yeah, as soon as.
Could I, how about, would you all be willing, Commissioner, if we make the changes, we send them to you, and then individually, you can give me any feedback?
Sure.
That way, I just, I'm timing, and part of this is, I do want to mention, and I do want to thank Ramon. As you all know, Ramon is about to continue his journey back into journalism, and he stayed, part of why he chose the date was so that he could see this project to its finish, and I really appreciate his dedication to that. I'd like to try to finalize the design, send it to the court for any other feedback. We're hearing and will pay close attention to this feedback, and then if there's any other feedback that you all send, we'll make any changes, send it back before we send it out, not for approval or any kind of action, just feedback individually.
Yeah, I feel very comfortable with that because of what I've heard here on the days that, you know, it's a great idea, so, you know, that if it saves time and we get it out to the voters in time, that's what we all want.
Betsy, maybe I missed it. I don't remember seeing it on the agenda.
This item or?
Ramon, leaving?
It's not approved, sir. It's not been approved.
Well, and thank you for your work on it, Ramon. I mean.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You've always been a great county employee, and we're going to miss you. Go easy on us, okay? But thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your time, but it's not me, it's been your staffs, the county admin staff, and Betsy, so thank you all.
It really has been a pleasure working with you, Ramon. I've known you for many, many years, and it really has been nice working. I can't think of anybody who has had a displeasurable moment with you, so we thank you, and best of luck out there, and like Commissioner Stout says, take it easy on us in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ramon.
Thank you, Ramon.
We could also, I might be trying to do too much, but we might be able to also note that early voting starts on the postcard with a little more room.
Yeah, maybe a little bubble that just says the date.
Yeah.
Good idea. Now, the rest of the items, I really wanted the judge to be back. Is there, I know that item four and item eight, the judge really wants to be involved in that. Should we take a small break and somebody can check with the judge to see what the timeframe might be?
Is that okay with the court?
Yes.
Okay, Jessica?
Okay. Would you like to recess for how long? Would we need 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Okay, Commissioner's Court will recess for 10 minutes.
Missioners Court has reconvened to special open session. Item number four, discuss and provide feedback regarding Homes Project application to the
And thank you just for the court's information. The judge isn't going to be able to make it back in time. So he said to please go ahead. So thank you, sir.
Before we start, I just wanted to be able to, I don't know if Mr. Bishop is online.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, or Commissioners, I'm sorry. I know the judge is out. This is going to be a presentation from home regarding the project that they're proposing on Alameda at the cross street of Alameda Creek Avenue in Clint. It's and it's, this one's anticipated to have 40 to 50 units. And interesting project proposal for the court's consideration. So today, what we want to do is, I think Christina is going to do a quick reminder of the legal requirements here that are associated with this and the timelines. And then Home is here and they're ready to present the project, and then the court can answer questions after that. And Christina, with that, would you like to go ahead and just make a few comments and updates for the court?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Good morning, County Judge Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Just very quickly, just to make sure that the court is up to speed. If you recall, on December the 10th, the Commissioners Court approved an interlocal agreement with Home for certain operations in El Paso County. With that said, one of the requirements, specifically Section 4 of that interlocal agreement, required that Home come back with their project proposal and include certain information for the county to consider in making its decision. The information that was required per the interlocal included the applicant's name, address and contact information, location of the proposed project, the project's development name, approximate number of total units, and number of local income units of the proposed project, and brief description of the project's attributes, and a list of any homophiliates that would be included on the proposed project. Home has submitted that information. For your all's information, that was also sent out to you as soon as they had sent that over to the county. They did so on January the 10th. So for today, as Joel has mentioned, it is only for discussion. A item will be posted on your court's agenda for Monday, January the 24th, to take final action on this particular item per the terms of the interlocal agreement. So with that said, I'll go ahead and entertain any questions. And if none, again, my understanding is the Home representative is here to walk you through the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. The floor is yours.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Tom Deloy. I am with the Housing Authority now, Home, and I'm joined remotely by Mr. Shashawn, Mr. Bob Blumenfeld, Mr. Art Pervingi, and our development partner, Tom Anderson. Our tax credit consultant is not able to join us. I have three slides to orient you to where our current status is with this tax credit application. So second slide, please. And it's my pleasure to be here. So thank you for the opportunity to present this status to you so we can discuss it further. If we travel 28 miles east and exit at 42 for the Clint-Sant Elizario exit, travel towards Clint and take a left on Alameda, as Joel indicated, our property does front on Alameda Avenue. Next slide, please. We're most proximal to the Clint High School. So the red square-shaped 440 feet by 500 feet parcel is five acres in size. We do have it under contract, and it is this parcel that we intend to construct at this time 40 units. We have a concept plan, which is, the next slide, please. This is our concept slide. And based on the feedback from the dialogue that we've had with you and those that's joined in that dialogue earlier, we understand that the population in the county desires single-family or duplex units as opposed to multifamily. So this depicts a single-family configuration. These units are oriented so that the site is efficient, very efficient for us, with access both drives, ingress, egress off of Alameda. Point out that there's 12 on the periphery and two rows of eight on the interior totaling 40 units. There's also a community center that fronts on Alameda. We like this site because it is visible. And we do want to achieve success. When I say "we," collectively, we want this property to be successful for the county, for the Housing Authority, and the population that we will serve. So we intend to have leasing success with our front door fronting on Alameda. We like this product as well. We are familiar with this product. We are primarily a multifamily builder, but we do have single-family homes in our portfolio and communities that are like this. Now, part of the discussion here is that we're in early innings with our application. We haven't sorted out, is it single-family or is it duplex? We need to do some more research. And we're asking through our development partner to provide us with the costs of this project. So we want to make sure that we can afford this project. And so we're looking at costs. As you know, costs continue to escalate in the marketplace. So to say that this is simply just a concept at this point. As we prepare and stepwise go forward towards a full application, we will understand exactly what is the unit configuration? How many, let's say, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom units will we construct? We haven't etched that out completely in stone at this point. To your earlier concerns, and because this is a tax credit application, we will comply. And in our process of seeking maximum points, we will serve the 30% AMI population, the 50% AMI population, and the 60% AMI population. If you put those percentages up against the 40 count of units, that's three at the 30% AMI level, that's eight at the 50%, and the balance 29 at 60% AMI level. So that is what we're intending to do.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that really quickly?
Three at 30%.
Yes.
Eight at the 50%. That represents 20% of the unit count. And the balance will be at 60% AMI. So with that, we're very excited about this opportunity. And, you know, we are in the process of hiring the team, which is the architect. We have a development partner. We shared that with you earlier. They're Penrose, a national leader in this regard for affordable housing. We're in the process of selecting architects, as I said, a civil engineer, an environmental engineer, all of the work that needs to go together to galvanize a significant full application so that we can round from first base to second base. Second base is submitting that full application in March with your support. We will get there. And then in July, the award. And then thereafter, we will close. So this is a process where, as I said, we're in early innings, but we pursue into the interlocal in our discussions. We wanted to share where we are at with you. If you have questions, the team is prepared to answer any questions. But that is, I think, represents our status at this time.
I just had a couple of questions. So just to make sure I wrote the numbers correctly. So three units at the 30% AMI, eight units at the 50% AMI. So that leaves the remaining 29 units at the 60. Now, is there any flexibility if, once the project is built and you start renting it to families, if there's more of a need in the 30% AMI category? Is there flexibility to be able to increase those numbers? Or are they pretty much stuck at those?
Remember, these are percentages up to 60%. So yes, we can serve more, but that's the limit at this time. So I hope that answered your question. But these are, so if we have more than three families
Yes.
that earn great, you know, are earning a 30% AMI? Yes, we can accommodate that.
Great. So there is flexibility then if a need is identified for the lower AMI bracket families? Great, okay. And then I also had a question about, one of the issues that we've seen in that area is when new developments come in, it seems that sometimes consideration isn't given to, for example, the increase in traffic, the increase in cars. As part of this process, is there a traffic study that's conducted so that we can make sure? Alameda is a, you know, it's a very busy street. It's the main way to get around in the valley. So the more developments that we see, the more that we have traffic issues come up. So as part of this process, will there be some kind of traffic study where we look at what kind of traffic control measures would be needed in that area? Especially since it's so close to the high school. So you see a lot more congestion. Is that a possibility as part of the, as you're going through the planning process and the architectures, the architects, and things like that?
You brought up, let me segue for just a minute before I answer that. You brought up, and I missed that, part of our likability of this site is the fact that it is close to the high school. So, you know, the housing brings stability to the family and bringing proximal to education and that pathway forward. We thought this site was a great plus because of that. Let me say that we all can share in the knowledge that, hey, when you build 40 more units and the families are living there, it's a not very walkable community at that point out in the county. People are going to require cars. So we know the traffic counts are going to increase. We can share in that. And we can also size that there's 40 units, right? So we know that, you know, peak travel times are going to increase in the morning and return upon their return from their workdays. To the extent that a traffic study is done, you know, that's available for any developer. It's not a requirement. It's not a requirement. And therefore, I'm not sure exactly what benefit there would be to a traffic count other than we can quantify what this type of community might generate in traffic. But it's not going to be significant to change the congestion, let's say, at a major traffic signal. We're not going to go from a category, whatever it's rated at, at Alameda, from, you know, category C, let's say it's providing service at C, to a B or an A level. So I don't know that this is incrementally, incrementally going to garner the community any changes, but we can discuss that.
Great. And then just my last question. So the very first slide of the presentation, is that what you're picturing? It may look, or is that just kind of a generic? No, not this one, the very first one, the very, very, very first one.
No.
This one, that's.
No.
Is that just kind of a generic?
Yeah, that's our, sort of our trophy, Paisano Green.
Okay.
Which is a net zero community that we did over like 10 years ago.
Okay.
But it is, and I think we're changing our side to be now the Blue Flame, but that's not, that's not a representation of what we're doing down in Clint.
Okay, yes. No, I think that Paisano Green is a beautiful community, but I don't know if that would necessarily fit with the
Oh, okay, thank you.
the area, the more agricultural area. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's a great presentation. Alexis, can we have that last slide? That one? I think that's great. Those are, from what I can see here, individual homes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The question I always ask is, is the roadway that's built into it, is that enough for an emergency vehicle to back up and go around?
We'll make sure we comply with that. Because as we know, in the county, the fire safety, like everywhere else, is important. So yes, I mean, that roadbed will not be skinny. It will be, we will have to accommodate life safety vehicular movements and turning movements.
Yeah, that's really exciting. That looks really, really nice. And it's, they're not apartments. They're possibly duplexes or individual small homes. And the only other thoughts that I have is that you, as you go through your planning stages, that you consider the Upper East Side in your plot or your planning for your next possible project.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the court's satisfied with your presentation for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Tom. This item will be on your agenda for action or for action on Monday. And also, if the court does want to support it, there will be a specific letter or resolution that will be asking the court to approve on Monday that they'll be submitting with the application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deloy.
Item number eight, discuss and provide feedback on information or guidance needed from the El Paso United COVID-19 Transition Task Force.
Commissioners, Betsy Keller, County Administrator. As you may recall, back in the very early days of the pandemic, Commissioners Court and the City Council formed the El Paso United COVID-19 Transition Task Force. This task force is made up of a representative from each of the policymaking bodies, the city and the county, as well as several public health and medical professionals in our community. And the purpose, when the task force was initially formed at the beginning of the pandemic, the purpose was for them to give us medical-based recommendations on all of our practices that we were engaging in, and just to give us policy advice to consider. And as a result of that, the task force started meeting. They broke up into subcommittees. They identified areas that they wanted to give policy recommendations on. And those areas, there were five specific areas that they addressed. They had some overarching recommendations, preparedness recommendations, data recommendations, testing and contact tracing, and communication recommendations. They prepared an initial report with some short and midterm, actually, I'm sorry, with some short-term recommendations right away. And then they came back because we felt, they felt like the city and the county needed those quick recommendations to get going. And then they came back with some mid- and long-term recommendations. And they provided this information to report, in a report, to both the city and the county. The majority of the areas, there were 28 recommendations total. The majority of areas were covered by the city because they were public health-related. But the area that the county covered was mostly in the communications area. And so that's when we engaged with Paso del Norte and we started a communications outreach program through them and started working with the promotoras and doing various types of media, things of that nature. The task force has met, continued to meet since its formation in early 2020. At this time, we meet at least about once every four weeks at the most. And they, we have an item on every week, I'm sorry, every meeting for any public policy recommendations. The majority of the discussions that are held during the meetings are about current things going on with vaccines. They do work together to continue to do messaging. And they do give feedback to Paso del Norte on the types of messaging we need to do, whether it's about child vaccines or boosters. They do continue to do, help with that vaccine messaging. That messaging will continue regardless because we work with Paso del Norte directly to have that communication be ongoing. However, the task force at its last meeting, and I failed to mention, Commissioner Stout sits on the task force. He's your current appointee to that task force. But after they created the two reports of recommendations, they've just generally been discussing what's going on in the community. Not, they have not given any more policy recommendations because they've provided these reports with them. And they asked recently, when we went to discuss the date of the next meeting, they asked that before they meet again, that we ask you, is there anything specific you want them to be working on? And if there is something specific you'd like the task force to bring back to you as a recommendation or to act upon? They'd be glad to. Of course, a lot has changed in our, the legal landscape as to what the county is able to do because the judge's local authority has been somewhat restricted. So, for example, like if they wanted to recommend that everyone have to wear a mask anytime they're in public, they could recommend that, but it's not something necessarily we could implement, and they're aware of that. So they've asked just if there's any other specific charges. Otherwise, they'd like to meet just on an ad hoc, as-needed basis. So if an issue came up, we'd have them have a meeting. But I wanted to check with the court to see if there's anything specific that you all think the task force is a goal or a specific item that you all would like them to act upon.
Commissioner Stout, since you sit on it, any recommendations?
The one thing that I've talked about before, and I guess, I mean, it might be also a good idea to revisit, you know, all the recommendations that they gave and what was actually implemented and what wasn't. And I know that there was also, I think, one of the recommendations more longer term was to do like an after-action report. It's been two years since we started this. And I can't remember when the actual task force was put together, but it was probably mid-2019, right? I don't know if you remember, Betsy, but I think it would be a good idea to start looking into that and trying to understand, just looking back and seeing what we did okay, what we did great, what we didn't do so well. Because it's not over. And, but even though it's not over, I still think that we stand to do some of that, like looking back and understanding how we can build upon some of the good things that we did and not, and learn from some of the mistakes that we made so that we don't make them again. and learn from some of the mistakes that we made so that we don't make them again, type of thing, right? So I don't know. I can't remember the last time that we had a presentation from Ms. Mack at the city on that that list of of short-term and midterm, you know, or medium-term recommendations and how we did, right? That's one, that's one thing that comes to my mind.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Commissioner Stout, that we have an after-action report. Yeah, what did we do right? What did we do wrong? How can we go into the future? Because this emergency isn't over yet. Maybe coming back to the court with some possible, in a couple of weeks, Betsy, maybe the committee, the board can get together and say, okay, this is a report to the court. Then we move on those issues that we are weak on. Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, I mean, just understand, so the public has an understanding. And I mean, I think, I just think it's good for us to to look back how things are. Obviously, we know much more about the virus now. And when we first started, it was just kind of like, you know, just with our eyes closed, feeling our way through things, right? But but I think as a community, we stand to to benefit from looking at and just, I mean, being very serious about it, right? And and understanding what we did well, what we didn't do well, and and taking that and learning from it and making sure that we that we don't make the same mistakes in in the future with certain things. I mean, because it's hard to tell. I mean, there could be another variant that that pops up that's more contagious and and more deadly, right? Or or more, you know, serious or severe. It's it's hard to tell. And then, and then, you know, we we might have to go back to talking about shutting things down. I don't know. I mean, everybody has COVID fatigue. And I think a lot of people felt like shutting things down wasn't the best thing to do. But some people still think that was the best thing to do. So just kind of looking at that and trying to figure out how we how we can can learn from our experience.
And you're right, Commissioner Stout. I think in the beginning, there were some mistakes made, but I'm very proud of the county's reaction, what what we did. I say "we," really, the staff and all our employees, law enforcement, the way we reacted to since two years ago compared to other entities around the state. I think we did great. And and you're right, Commissioner Stout. We we don't know if future deviations may be even deadbeer than what we've got now. Seems like so many people are touched by by the current COVID. So what I read from you is maybe come back with a, maybe an after-action report with recommendations?
Yeah.
So.
And I, I mean, so there's one thing that I can that I can think of that just pops into my head is that we did a really terrible job of, you know, trying to make sure that there was equity for folks that are disabled, right? I mean, we had to have disabled people come and tell us, hey, we can't read the, we can't read the website. We don't know what, we can't get the information for people that that may be blind or people that may be hard of hearing, you know? We had to, you know, they had to come and complain to us about it instead of us on the front end thinking about them first, right? I think that that's one stark mistake that we that we probably made that that comes to my mind and just laying those things out. So in the future, we, for example, keep the disabled community at the front of our mind when we're going to put out information or communications or making these decisions, making sure that we're, you know, that we're being as equitable as possible with the way that we're doing things.
So, sorry, Commissioner, so that was a recommendation from the task force, not for them to do an after-action report, but for, basically, that's one of the ones and it's recommendation number six under preparedness.
Right.
And it's part of the Develop a Public Health Organization and Strategic Plan for Future Public Health Emergencies. And one of the objectives under it is use COVID-19 After Action Report, Lessons Learned, and Performance Improvement Reports to inform, model, and strategic plan going forward.
Right. So it may not be the task force that that needs to do it. But I mean, that's why I think we need to kind of revisit all those recommendations and then say, okay, what are we missing? What do we need to do? And then, you know, I don't know if it's us collaborating with the city and OEM to do that after-action, you know, analysis and and do some, you know, put something together.
So, Betsy, would you need, or Commissioner Stout, would you need a couple of weeks to come back to us with that information?
What we would do, Commissioner, based on what I'm hearing, I would go back to the task force and say, we would like you to re-meet, to meet again. And and at your next few meetings, we'd like you to go through your past recommendations, get updates from both the city and the county on where we are, and give feedback based on that presentation.
And Betsy, I agree.
Go to the city, back to the city and the county.
And I agree with the for, the task force that they shouldn't be meeting just to meet. So, yeah, if you can get back to us in about a couple of weeks, then we can go from there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
There'll be no action for item number eight. This now brings us into item number nine, executive session. Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 9A and 9B pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county.
It's a baby, right?
It's a baby. It's a month, two months.
From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with with our transition. So these dogs own, set foot at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous. of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.